Appreciate that all of you are here today. We're going to start our meeting with an invocation from Shawn Voges of Hillside Christian Church. Shawn?
Let's pray. God, we thank you for today. We thank you for all the opportunities that you've given to each of us. And God, for our city leadership. I'm really thankful for the way that you've molded and shaped them as leaders in our community. And God, we are thankful that you brought them together today. I pray for just all the decisions that need to be made. I pray that you would give them wisdom in each of those. And God, I pray for their stewardship of opportunities that you've given. And also for resolution of conflict when that needs to happen. And God, I pray that you will just give them wisdom in all the decisions, things that need to happen today. And we're thankful for the city we get to live in and for the community we get to be a part of. And I pray your blessing on today. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the privilege of starting off our meeting today with several proclamations. And the first proclamation is for Delta Sigma Theta. And you might be able to see that they're with us in the room today, but ladies, we would be so honored if you would join us up here, just sneak behind the ropes here.
You'll need some muscles.
Perfect. We'll send you a bill for that. It's always good when the builder breaks it, right? Let me just say, red is my favorite color, but you guys are really stepping up our meeting here. Whereas the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated began on January 13th, 1913, with 22 young black women on the campus of Howard University with a community service-oriented goal in the city where their campus was located, and then returned to their home cities to continue that service. And whereas the Amarillo Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., began on April 29th, 1962, with 15 women that made the pledge at college and came back to keep the goal alive. Whereas the Amarillo Alumni Chapter has continued to support the community with many projects over the last 60 years. And whereas some of these community projects have included assisting with the Hazel Ridge Christmas Project, providing mentoring and tutoring programs for youth, offering scholarships to graduating seniors, working with the High Plains Food Bank, assisting the North Side Toy Drive, sponsoring the Lisa Cherry Health Fair, and participating in Kids Fest. And whereas the Amarillo Alumni Chapter looks forward to continuing to support the community in the coming years. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022, as Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated Day in Amarillo. And we thank all past and current members of the Amarillo Alumni Chapter for their service to the community, given under our hands and seal of office this 26th day of April 2022, signed by the entire city council. Ms. Allison Roberts, will you step up here with me, please? It is quite an honor to present this to you. Allison's grandma, Helen Neal, was one of the founding members of this chapter. And her mother Gloria is also—Gloria, are you with us today? Yes? Is also a member. So this is not just a community connection, but it's also important, the family connections be recognized too. So Allison, anything you want to say?
We just want to thank you for recognizing our 60 years of service. We're glad to be in this community and be of service to the community, and we just appreciate you.
Well, we're thrilled to have you. Congratulations on 60 years.
Yes, that'd be awesome. Councilmember Smith has another proclamation for us.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege for me to present this proclamation. I've been in the real estate business for 42 years, and this is National Fair Housing Month, so let me read this proclamation. Why don't you come on up here, stand with me. Eddie Realtor involved. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discriminatory housing practices in the sale, rental, and financing of dwellings based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, physical or mental disability, or familial status. And whereas the Amarillo Association of Realtors is committed to the mission and intent of the Fair Housing Act to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, without regard to the race, color, national origin, religion, sex, physical or mental disability or familial status, and any prospective client, customer, or the residents of any community. And whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse inclusive communities. And whereas the Amarillo Association of Realtors believes acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to the common sense of decency and fairness. Whereas the Amarillo Association of Realtors and Realtors nationally pledge to affirmatively pursue business practices that will ensure that everyone is welcome and no one is excluded. Now therefore, we, mayor and city council of the City of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 22 as National Fair Housing Month. We just barely got it in, in April. It is to establish our community as an open and inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promote appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide or advocate for integration and equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of our city, given under our hands and seal of office, signed by Junior Nelson, Mayor Cole Stanley, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and myself. And that concludes that. And we've got Jason Halt here, representing to—
Thank you.
—wants to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Mayor Nelson and councilmen and women, for not only honoring our Fair Housing Proclamation, but for your ongoing efforts for fair and affordable housing. The Amarillo Association of Realtors has been working diligently to ensure fair housing within our Amarillo area. Currently, we're working to further educate our members of the community that homeownership is within reach for all. Many people do not realize that the American dream of homeownership is attainable. The Amarillo Association of Realtors just wrapped up its very first homeownership series at the Charles E. Warford Activity Center. During each session, real estate professionals spoke about the home buying process in an open forum, where attendees were able to ask questions very freely. Upon completion of the association's first homeownership series, we asked the attendees if they felt like they were closer to homeownership than they were at the start of the series, and every single one answered yes. This may be the first of many series in the near future that we're going to do in several different communities. Together, we will continue to diversify homeownership and ensure fair housing for all within our community. Thank you.
And Councilman Eddie Smith—Eddie Smith. Eddie Sauer has our final proclamation for the day.
There you go. Okay, so I feel really honored to get to read this proclamation. This is for public service recognition this week, and I would say almost everybody sitting in here probably qualifies for that, but especially all of the city employees that are here. And so I'd like to ask you all to come up here with us for this proclamation. So if you're working for the city, we want you up here, and Mitch has to be up here since. Okay. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unzung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Their tireless efforts are especially critical today during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas many public servants risk their lives each day in service to the people of our communities, as well as provide safety inspections, operate our public facilities, and provide the diverse service demanded by the American people with integrity and efficiency. And whereas public servants provide the institutional knowledge, experience, and continuity that supports the long-term sustainability of our community assets and organizational history. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, we, mayor and city council members of the City of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1 through 7, 2022, as Public Service Recognition Week in Amarillo, and encourage all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contribution of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city, given under our hands and seal of office this 26th day of April 2022. Everybody on city council has signed this. So I'll just say a word real quick, and then hand this off to Mitch. One of the best things that has happened over the past five years of being on city council is realizing the depth and the quality of the people that we do have working for our city and taking care of our city for us. It's been an honor to meet a lot of you all and get to know some of you, and I am very grateful for the service that you provide the city and provide all of us. Otherwise, we couldn't keep this city running without you guys. And so I'm very grateful. Thank you very much. Got a few words to say?
No, well, first, I'd like to just thank mayor and council for affording us this platform and acknowledgement to all the hard-working city employees. There are so many people dedicated to this organization, to the community, and unfortunately, we couldn't have them all here today. But we do have several individuals representing different areas of our organization that I'd like to just take a moment to introduce. And if you would, just raise your hand so that everyone in attendance and watching from home can recognize and acknowledge the area that you are representing. We have Douglas Patrick from Environmental Health, David Martin from Utilities, Stephen Grant from our Osage Water Treatment Plant, Jamie Trup from Utility Billing, Diane Hassler Vital Statistics, Jeremiah Johnson from Streets, Connie Lamelli from Library, Ty Vernon, Animal Management, Dalton George from Animal Management, and Ren Pharaoh from Animal Management. We have Jeff Justice from Fire, Nicole Pacheco from Court, and Tammy Bragg from Court. I appreciate everything that y'all do, and thank you all, council again and mayor, for this proclamation. So thank you.
We appreciate you.
Back up here for the picture, too.
Gonna hide on the side.
I had to talk him out of phone box.
Okay. Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public address?
No, mayor, we do not.
Okay, let's move into our agenda then. Item 1A is to review the packets that you had, council. Is there anything right up front that you need more information or you have questions about? Okay, item 1B is to discuss consultants to assist with maximizing Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and other federal funding programs. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, mayor. This is an item that—I think to introduce the item, we have to really have an understanding or at least appreciation for the amount of money through infrastructure and jobs, IIJA, that is available right now. It's over a trillion dollars that are available through the federal government right now. The purpose of this item is to discuss with council and seek guidance from council on what direction we should go. But we brought in the Normandy Group to discuss and present to council, to talk about things that they might be able to bring to the city. What we want to do is use as much federal assistance as we can, use a consultant to help us navigate the federal funding process. We are so far removed from Washington, D.C. There is so much money available to be had, and we would get some without trying. We will get so much more through a concerted effort to make sure that we are putting our needs out there to all the people that are decision-makers, so that we can maximize the amount of money that we can push to Amarillo and to the Panhandle. I think in previous decades, I don't think anybody would argue that the Panhandle has gotten more than their fair share of federal funds. In this case, my goal, my hope, would be that we will ensure that Amarillo and the Panhandle will do our best job to get our fair share. Quite personally, in my opinion, I want more than my fair share, but I will settle for a fair share for the Panhandle. The whole purpose of this is not to change federal policy, is not to advocate for changes in federal policy, but to maximize the amount of money we can get through agencies and funding programs to assist both infrastructure and jobs in the Amarillo and Panhandle areas. So I just wanted to make that real clear. We're not out there to change any type of policy. We're out there to advocate for Amarillo and the Panhandle's needs from an infrastructure standpoint. So I'd like to introduce former Congressman—I always mess up the introduction, Mr. Bonilla, but former Congressman Henry Bonilla. And then also Ron Aratano and Christine Pellerin of the Normandy Group. Go ahead and just bring y'all up. Y'all want to ask me any questions before we bring them up, or how do we want to do this?
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, mayor, members of the council, for this opportunity. And before we begin, I just want to make an observation about your proceedings thus far today. When I was a member of Congress, I represented 29 counties that had over 100 cities and towns in them. And I've never seen this wonderful informality of your official business, as we just witnessed, where there weren't barricades between you and the people, and it was really a cool thing to see that I haven't seen in the chambers of any other council meeting that I've ever been in. And Jared, you've seen quite a few as well, so that's pretty cool. And we're going to take that back with us as a memory of today.
And I should point out, I have experience with the Normandy Group in a previous city. And in that city, only in the few years that I was there, working with the Normandy Group, we were able to secure well over $50 million in funding for the city. And when you put it in perspective, we had a major flood in 2015 because of the relationships that we had built in Washington, D.C. And this flood had over a dozen fatalities, that many of them ended up in the city in which I was working. The City of Houston got like $30 million. The Harris County got another $60 million. And then the remainder of the money that was given to any one jurisdiction was to the city in which I was, or where I was, and that was about $50—ended up being over $50 million. So because of those relationships, we were able to outperform Harris County in Houston and really any other place in Texas that got money. I mean, Harris County got more money, but per capita, we multiplied them by 30.
I'm glad you bring that up, Jared, because since you've been gone, we've more than doubled that with the City of San Marcos. And we are very humbled and proud when the city, in a formal proceeding, will tout what our firm has helped them do. As you know, we operate like a congressional office, but in the private sector. If you walk in the shoes of a member of Congress that had 29 counties, and Mike Thornberry used to always kid me over many years, that you think that's a lot? He had over 40. And that's what Ronnie still has. He has 41. And as much as a member of Congress would like to focus entirely on one community that they represent, they can't. And so what we do is we focus on exactly what that community needs. And that means going after grants with agencies, specific agencies, like USDA, or the Commerce Department, or whatever's available. Or, as we have in this day and age, the infrastructure bill that you alluded to, Jared, in your opening comments about money out there now that's just there for those who are willing to appropriately apply for it, and in areas not just for roads and bridges, but for bike lanes, and you name it, for EV parking facilities and recharging facilities, countless bike paths, all of those things are out there now. And cities are already working on it now across the country. And we have worked with several governmental entities over my lifetime with the Normandy Group since I've been a partner there, and I'm proud to say that we've never been a red line item on anyone's budget publicly. You think a city or a county's going to retain us and pay the fees every month and see it be in the red? No. And it takes work, though. As Jared saw, and in our brief conversations with you, mayor, and Jared, and members of your staff before, we know that you all are engaged. And if we're able to hold hands with your team and march forward, there is a heck of a lot of opportunity out there. So I'm going to let Christine and Ron also come up and say a couple of words. But in general, just to close, I've been with the Normandy Group now every year since I've been out of Congress, and wouldn't be anywhere else, and I'm just proud. I'm an old-fashioned Texan that believes that if you don't work, you don't get paid. And if you don't produce, that people aren't going to stay with you. And we're proud to have clients with us that have stayed with us for endless years over time, and because of the work that we do. So without further ado, I'm going to yield to either Ron or Christine.
Well, good afternoon, mayor and council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Christine Pellerin, and I'm the last founding partner of the Normandy Group. We formed 17 years ago, and I've been in the industry for over 30 years. Some of what you may not see on our website is 75% of our clients are comprised of nonprofit entities, many of those in the public sphere. And we're just so proud of some of the work that we do. And just looking at all of your bios and how invested you are, not only in the community and your public service, but privately through your ministries, and I just want to share with you a couple of different projects that we've worked on. We represent Adult and Teen Challenge, which is a faith-based alcohol and drug rehabilitation center. It has 260 clinics throughout the country, one of them proudly here in Amarillo, Life Challenge of Amarillo. And we're just very, very proud to further their mission and get as much federal funding to help these patients as possible. Also, the National Association of Community Health Centers. That predates even the Normandy Group. I've been representing them for 25 years and started that really in my work as a proud staffer of former Congressman Henry Bonilla. When I led up his appropriation work, Henry championed health center issues, and of course, those are federally qualified health centers. You have two clinics here in Amarillo. And we, since we were involved with this organization, brought them from about an $800 million program to over a $5.7 billion program. And they're in almost every congressional district throughout the country, and really in many instances are the only place people can turn for primary preventive healthcare services. So that just gives you a little bit of a picture of some of the work we do on that side of the ledger. We're very proud of our work for municipalities and counties. This is where literally the rubber meets the road on making your municipalities work. Jared mentioned it, the congressman mentioned it, and no one does this better than our managing partner, Ron Aratano, who we're going to pull up here in a minute, to talk about this infrastructure bill. It's historic. We may not see another one like it in our lifetime. You will get some funding without even trying. There are formula-based funding opportunities that will come down to you. But you will miss an awful lot of opportunities if you don't have that concerted effort and a really focused campaign to go after them, not only in the infrastructure realm of things, but even beyond that. We have—the Farm Bill is coming up for authorization in the next Congress. One of our partners is Dr. John Goldberg. He spent nearly 25 years on the House Agricultural Committee, 22 of those years as the chief scientist for that committee. He's written four iterations of the Farm Bill. Bill. That's mandatory money that comes into communities to implement the programs from SNAP, to water resources, to rural development, all kinds of aspects. That's one bill that really, really touches every aspect of American life. And that's an opportunity you wouldn't normally think of it, maybe, in broadband issues are in that bill as well. The WRTA bill, the Water Resources Development Act comes up for reauthorization. That's another program, and Jared, that we worked very closely with the city of San Marcos to deal with stormwater abatement issues and, and other things. That's coming up. You need to position now in order to make sure that you're competitive for that, because the administration does put forward some recommendations. And so we'll want to position you for that bill as well. And I think Ron will talk about the FAA reauthorization bill and our work with airports. We know you have a very large airport here in your community and two regional airports as well. That's another area based on a large client that we have, the FAA Managers' Association, where we have relationships and really understand policies and funding sources through the Department of Transportation's Airport Improvements Program and the like. So I, I really, I hope I'm not stealing Ron's thunder, because no one does it better than him, but I'm going to ask him to come up here. And we're just absolutely thrilled to have an opportunity to talk with you, and we really hope we can put our team to work for yours.
Thanks, Christine, and thank you all very much for, for your time today. We did do a presentation. You all have it printed out in front of you. We're not going to go verbatim through it. Just feel free to use as a reference point. We're probably going to address a lot of it here, you know, throughout the course of this conversation. But, you know, you've heard it multiple times. Henry mentioned it, Christine mentioned it, Jared, you mentioned in your opening comments, historic, right? This, this infrastructure bill, you know, I think cumulatively, we, you know, up here have 90 years of experience in Washington DC, and there's never been a piece of legislation like this specifically targeted towards infrastructure. It is unique. It's a trillion dollar bill, and it's broken up in a lot of different ways. Some of it is formulaic, as Christine mentioned, but a lot of it is not. A lot of it, you're, you're going to have to compete for. And, and it's not a surprise, you know, doing what we do in DC, we constantly are monitoring, you know, who's, who's hiring folks like us to help them through this process. And just since, from the start of the year, we were, I was just counting yesterday, 41 different cities, just cities, not counties, other municipal governments, have hired somebody like us to help them kind of get, make their way through this process. And the reason being is, you know, you have the formulaic funds, but there are 26 new competitive grant programs. I mean, predominantly, 99% are targeted towards municipalities to go after. So the idea is, these, these federal agencies, and it's split up, it's not just the Department of Transportation, it's the EPA, Department of Commerce, Department of Agriculture, you go down the list, pretty much every single federal agency got money through this infrastructure bill. And, and, you know, obviously, the transportation piece is the largest, but it's, it's just one pocket of money. And, and these folks are hearing from communities daily, right? Constantly meeting with them, and, and trying to position yourself to keep, to stay on their radars, figure out what, what they're looking for in their guidance, so you're not just submitting a grant application blindly. Because oftentimes, that's what happens. You just, you read the guidance, you try to, you know, submit something, and then, you know, goes into like a dark hole, and you don't hear anything for six months, and you cross your finger and hope it works out. Part of what we do is meet with those folks ahead of time, right? We'll have the conversations with the program officers that oversee these grant programs. You know, what are you looking for? What's the guidance you're looking for? We've got, you know, we've got an overpass we want to get addressed. We've got a water system we want to get addressed. You know, what program would you suggest we target? And it's, it becomes more conversational to the point, and Jared, you saw this a lot when we were doing, when we've done our work with San Marcos, is, you know, it's, it becomes a two-way street where they're almost, they want to see a willing partner, right? The federal government, for all its, you know, negative commentary that people look at it towards, at the end of the day, they want to make sure the money and that they're apportioning out is going to be put to good use, and they're going to get the most bang for their buck. You know, whether it's for political benefits or not, at the end of the day, somebody's going to get that money. And, and, you know, we would encourage you all to consider the best way to position yourselves to get that. Now, specific programs within the bill to really think about, you know, roads and bridges, obviously, tons of money for that. Some of that's going to come through Tech dot. And we do work with Tech dot a lot. They actually are one of the states that have an office in Washington DC. Jared, you may remember this, we did it a lot with San Marcos. We have a great relationship with their office there. And what their office in DC does is kind of serves as a liaison between the US Department of Transportation and the folks in Austin, right? And in developing that relationship, something we've built over about seven or eight years, and it's, it's really helped us kind of figure out what Tech dot's thinking, you know, with the guidance coming down from the US DOT. And right now, I was just talking to my colleague over there the other day, and she's like, we're getting inundated. You know, a lot of communities are coming in, asking for guidance, and she says, it's great, because, you know, they serve as that conduit to US DOT. Similarly, US DOT, they're taking meetings constantly with different entities. We've already taken a few of our municipal clients in to see them, to talk about specific priorities. So Henry mentioned earlier, one of our, our clients is interested in hike and bike path, and there is specific set aside program within, within the big infrastructure bill that's coming down through US DOT. And so we got the appropriate guidance. Now, that's going to, that's a couple of months out before they'll be able to compete for it. They're already laying that groundwork. And those are the type of conversations you, you know, you want to be having here in the next two to three months, if you can. And I do want to stress one thing about the infrastructure bill. It is, it's a five-year bill, right? It isn't just today, right? It's, it's a five-year funding stream that's going to get renewed. So each one of these programs is going to have a new competition that comes out every, every year, right? So even if you weren't successful the first year, what we would do is that we'd go back to that program manager and say, okay, what could we do better? Is this not the right project? And then we compete in year two, we compete in year three, we compete in year four. And I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves down the line, but it gives you an idea that this is true, this is what makes, I think, totally and truly transformational. It's not just like a, a one-shot, you know, like the American Rescue plane. That was a one-shot, you know, you know, docket of money going out. This is, this is more strategic, and it's over a period of time. And, and it, and it takes some groundwork. But, you know, just from what we've seen from, from you already, with the talented team you have around you, all the great things you have going on here, I think you're very well positioned to compete. But I do want to stress, it is well beyond the Department of Transportation. And I'm not going to bore everybody with the, you know, you should see the summaries of the bill are, are this big, with all the different programs in there. Certainly could walk everybody through each one of those and figure out, once we know better, what your priorities of the city are, what, how they align, you know, with certain different programs. And just one other note there, and I'll stop, stop talking about the infrastructure bill, is not only is it important because it's a one-time, unique set of, set aside of funding, it also frees up regular grant programs that are going on in all the different federal agencies that you may be interested in, right? So, so, you know, Community X is going to target the infrastructure money. Well, they're still having their regular grant programs through the Department of Transportation that, you know, less people will be competing for, because they're going to be going, you know, or they'll have more money to give out. And that goes through every agency, right? You know, the Economic Development Administration, I've noticed all the great work you all have done, you know, on economic development front. They, they, they're not really, they didn't get a bunch of money in the infrastructure bill, but they get money every year. And they have a revolving grant program, and something that you all should be competing for. We had some success with that in San Marcos. We've done it for some of other of our clients. So it, it's not just the bill itself. It, it actually creates kind of an echo chamber effect across the federal government, where it just, you know, allows, allows more people to compete for more money, if that makes sense, you know, long-term. So I'll stop there. I don't know if you guys want to add anything on, on infrastructure, but if there's any questions?
Yeah, we're glad to take any questions, but one, one, two more quick points. We're about stability and, and long-term in our firm. I've worked with this lady off and on in different capacities for 30 years. And I've worked with Ron for 12 years. And we've also watched the pendulum swing politically, back and forth over time. And the new parties come in, and they're ruling the White House, they're ruling the agencies, and their majority, whatever. And sure enough, a couple of years go by, those of us who understand that life in DC is a marathon, not a sprint, and that regimes change and majorities change, we get that. So the smart ones in DC, we, we say, understand that you got to work together in the agencies, or with, sometimes with the minority, or the majority, whatever, to get things done. And while the cable channels are squawking every day with people yelling at each other, this kind of work goes on to grind it out, year in, year in and year out. And, and we are a bipartisan firm. And we clearly understand that the longevity of anything to get done in DC depends on that. We're glad to answer any questions.
Thank you all for making the trip to be with us today and to be available for questions. Council, do we have questions at this time? Councilmember Smith?
I have a question, I guess for the City Manager. We have 200,000 people here. How many did your previous town had? You got $50 million out of it.
Yeah, previous town was, it depends on what number you look at. Daytime population was in 80 to 85,000. Actual residents was around 59,000, 60,000, maybe 65. It was also the fastest growing city in the United States the whole time I was there, so that, that made a difference. It was growing pretty quick. But it's still significantly smaller than Amarillo, about three times, about a third of the size, if you just look at the city's population.
I've heard a lot of possibilities where we could apply for and get money. Do you think we're set up now, or can be set up to?
From a federal standpoint, this is going to be critical to giving us the input that we need to be competitive, and even being aware of, of certain doors to knock on, and programs to exploit. And even, even if we know a program, if we know the full spectrum of programs are out there, that will give us the insight to know which ones are ripe for us, rather than wasting a lot of energy on something where the funding agency already has an idea of where they want to spend it and how they want to spend it. They'll be able to say, hey, they have leftover funding from a previous year, or they've had a recipient go away, and now you've got $50 million that you can compete for. And it's not just the infrastructure deal. And it sounds like I'm selling for them. I'm not. I'm selling for Amarillo, because I know how much more effective that we were by having assistance, like in, in San Marcos. And I, I didn't ever say the name of the previous city, because nobody, no, no current council wants to hear you talking about some other city. I really just wanted to give context, so that you all know, this isn't, you know, me saying, hey, I think this is going to work. This is me saying, I know this is going to work. And it's going to expose us, give us opportunities to get more money than what we would otherwise be able to do on our own, far, far in excess of what we would pay them. And that's one thing I didn't say before. We've worked on negotiating a proposal from the Normandy Group. When I was in San Marcos, we paid Normandy $12,000 a month. The proposal here in Amarillo is $15,000 a month. Usually, it's a per capita type deal, so they're really doing a solid deal for, for the city of Amarillo. And, and I think there's a couple of reasons for that. One, we're a good partner. They have a past working experience. They have met my, met our team, and they know that we have a lot of projects that are really aggressively in the can, ready to go, ready to go get money. So we are a competitive partner that's going to help them do a great job, helping facilitating our efforts. They know that we've already done a lot of the legwork to make this thing work. I think I asked, answered more, quite more, I answered more than you asked, so sorry.
You did. You got ahead of me. Fine. Thank you. That's all I am.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor.
That's okay. Councilman Stanley?
How many cities in Texas do you represent? And specifically, any that are close to our size?
Well, we represent San Marcos, and then, of course, and then we also represent the county of Midland. And then we also do work for the city of San Antonio, specifically for their airport, for the grants and funds and, and, for example, it's not, sometimes not about money, but for the San Antonio Airport, they needed canines. When it was a big deal about a year or so ago, because there was a security issue. And TSA was desperate to get more dogs at the inspection station. So we helped them get that done with, with some help from a member of Congress. So it's not, it is about federal resources, but it's not always just about dollars. It's, it can be about something like that.
Okay. That's very helpful. And specifically, I think I'm asking because as a consultant, you're helping us compete. And so it'd be nice if we didn't have 30 other cities that are all real similar that you represent.
We've never run into any conflicts, and, and we've been open about that. Again, I think that's why people stick with us long-term.
Right.
And I'm just, can I just add to that, too? I mean, there are firms in Washington that all they do is municipal work, and that's what they do. They'll stack 40 or 50. And we've always been very strategic to not do that, because we don't want our clients competing with each other for, for these, these funds. Because, you know, it is an absolute pie, so it's definitely something we're always cognizant of.
The $15,000 a month, would there be another pay structure on top of that, or is that the, that's the consulting fee as is, regardless of?
All expenses.
Okay, great. And, and?
Sometimes firms do add-ons for everything from telephone expenses, and I'm sure you've seen that over the years, but that's at flat.
Okay, great. Yeah, being a contractor, I kind of understand a little bit about the cost-plus thing can grow. The, a lobbyist and a lobbyist firm is not what you guys are. Am I correct? You guys are a consulting firm that is going after grant.
Technically, all of us in DC are called government relations firms, but the colloquial common word is lobbyist. So yes, that's what we do.
Okay. I think I'm targeting that based on the fact that I really, I think we're missing out, and we're bad leaders if we leave out our city from going after grants, and understanding and educating all the many ways that we can bring revenue into our city for our citizens. And so I, I just don't want to, I don't want to misconstrue that to lobbying for certain special interests or whatnot. This, this to me looks a lot more like a grant writer, a firm that can help us in, in seeking dollars that are already there.
Yes, sir. And, and we're not technically grant writers, but again, Jared understands how this, all this works. But, and lobbying sometimes doesn't just mean legislation. It means support, like a member of Congress or a senator can be, we can line them up to support a grant that you're doing through a particular federal agency. And technically, that does fall under the rule of lobbying.
Okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Councilmember Sauer, anything?
I don't even know what to ask. I, I'm not sure that I completely, fully understand or grasp exactly what you guys actually do.
Can I add some color to that?
Please.
I can just tell you that participating in US Conference of Mayors events, and being around my Harvard class of mayors, we know there are many opportunities through this legislation. It, it's never, we've never had the kind of opportunities this legislation is providing us. So it's been just a few months ago that I was in DC at a conference for mayors. And, I mean, we had all kinds of different secretaries there, Secretary of Commerce, Secretary of Transportation, and every single session that I went to, as they're giving their talk, essentially, they're saying, we have more resources in our department than we've ever had before, and those resources are intended for cities. And they said, if you have any projects that are shovel-ready, now is the time to present them to us, so that we can help you attach funding to the projects that you have for your cities. Okay? The main thing there is how to make the attachment. So, I mean, I, you can ask Floyd and other people. I came back full of flyers, and I went all through City Hall saying, check on this, figure out how we apply for that grant. I think there might be funding for this program that I've been hearing you guys talk about. And, and what I realized was, they're, every day, all day, they already have work that they're doing. And it doesn't mean that they can't find some time to look, to fill out a grant form, or, but what we want is not just to get the form filled out and turned in. What we really want is to get it filled out, turned in, in a way that it brings resources back to our city. And it's, you know, again, these are not policy things. This legislation is in place. Other cities will be getting the dollars if we don't apply for the dollars. So I really see these guys as having the relationships, as well as being in DC. And this is the same with Austin. When we want to communicate to Austin, we have to get on a plane, we have to fly down there, usually involves an overnight stay. It's just very inefficient of our time. And we have work to do here in the city, not just our personal businesses, but actual elected official work to do. So to me, this is hiring an extension of us as we go out looking for funding for projects that we need. I mean, I'm thinking about hike and bike projects, Howard, that you have worked so hard on in the city. I'm thinking about Crossbar Ranch. I mean, there are so many things that staff has already started on, if nothing else, they've identified the need for. It's already in our CIP. How do we connect it to this opportunity that's coming out of Washington DC? They have a whole group of people who are resourced, who are present there in DC, and, and researching, like you said, it's not just simply interfacing with one department. It's almost every department in the federal government, whether it's Commerce and Broadband, or every single department has dollars out of this act. And we have projects in every single one of those areas. So I think it's really important for us to have an additional resource for this unique opportunity that would help us bring some of those funds back to our projects.
Okay. And Councilman, that's another reason that across America now, and across our state and across America, more cities and counties and parishes are all engaging with offices like ours.
Okay.
But questions? I want us to dialogue about it.
I don't think so. I just needed an understanding for exactly how this worked, or what?
Well, the mayor answered the question better than I could have.
Yeah.
I mean, I, it is just a unique season. I don't, I don't disagree that there are probably opportunities every single year in existence. every single year in existing financing. But what's really, in my mind, creating a need to do this now is this unique legislation. It's a unique season for federal funding for these type of infrastructure projects. And our, our community has infrastructure needs, just like every other community across the nation.
Can I, can I give a quick example, just kind of like a real world example? So one of our other communities in West Texas, Midland County, they came to DC recently for a visit. And we kind of went through the pantheon of the different agencies that are, that are getting funding out of the bill. And one of those agencies is the National Resource Conservation Service. Most people don't know anything about it. It's under the Department of Agriculture. And their funding, people just dismiss it as being targeted towards, you know, farming communities, right? But they have funding for all types of water-related issues, particularly flooding-related issues. So we had learned that one part of Midland County tends to have a flooding issue. And so we went in there knowing that they got a certain set aside through the infrastructure bill and said, you know, we know the program manager, we've gotten to know him very well over the years, it started more honestly with our engagement with San Marcos seven or eight years ago. And this gentleman basically walked us through the entire process. And he said, you know what? I don't know if you're good for this program. We really wanted somebody from Texas to apply for this other program. And we've already started the whole program. They're already in line to get some funding out of it. This is what, a month later, Henry, is when we met? So it's those type of conversations that if, you know, if you were just looking on your own, because it's such a vast, you know, federal government, so huge, you have all these programs, all these agencies, you wouldn't, you'd never, you'd never know it's there. And you'd never know they were targeting somebody from Texas to give some of that money towards. And that's happening, you know, as often as somebody's willing to have a conversation. So just to kind of give it a more of a concrete example rather than the big picture of things we're talking about.
Okay. So what happens if we flip it the other way around? Do you guys ever go, hey, we know of this that would be impactful for you guys in Amarillo?
Absolutely.
You all need to consider going after this.
We, we listen to our clients. And if we're so fortunate as to engage with Amarillo, the first thing we're going to do is schedule an intense meeting with staff and with you all to listen to exactly the biggest needs in this community. And then from there, we just launch off to DC as kind of like the hunting guides to find, to find what you need.
Okay.
That's a good question. But I fully expect it to be a two-way street. Once they understand what our priorities are, then they're, they're looking and searching for us.
Okay.
To Dr. Sauer's question, what is this? What does it look like? We're talking all the time, back and forth about, here's what's going on in this part, you know. And the amount of agencies that we're going to be dealing with through this is far more than what, what I used to do with. I mean, you got agriculture, you got energy, you got commerce, economic development, you know, all those other, community develop, HUD, rather, because we have significant HUD operations, community development operations. I could keep going on. But it is not just that we have a target-rich environment right now. We do. And they're going to help us with that. But also, while we're going down, going to DC or making phone calls or doing Zoom meetings, all the things that we're going to do, working and liaising with all of those different agencies, telling them our needs, telling them how we can be a partner with them, telling them how we can further their mission and goal, because they have a mission and goal, and this money is the way that they accomplish those missions and goals. And they need effective partners to do it. They're not just going to give it to someone that's not going to be effective. But as we go through this process, we're not just meeting with those agencies and with those entities that have the money right now. We're also meeting with every single stakeholder that we have in Washington DC, our elected delegation, from Congressman Jackson to Senators Cruz and Cornyn, to neighboring congressmen and who may have issues that are aligned with ours, where they need funding for a larger area. Say, we need something that's going to benefit the entire Panhandle or West Texas in general. We can help that happen. Also, you know, just I-27 funding. It's going to benefit more than just the Panhandle in Amarillo specifically. But the more we can funnel money into that I-27 project, the more it's going to benefit the city of Amarillo, our Loop 335 and all the other things that will benefit from that. But it's bigger than that because we're going to talk to every single agency that we might have need to talk to at some point in the future. So Department of Defense, not just for funding that might be able to help Bell or Pantex or any future vendor or company that might come here. But also, if we have veterans issues or anything like that, if they have a pot of money come up and they know what our issues are, then we are a known entity. We're a known entity. That's what worked out so well in that previous city is they knew who we were. So when a disaster happened, they came to us almost saying, hey, we know you. We know you're responsible with everything you've given us in the past. Here's more. And so it's building those relationships in an area that we really don't have many relationships, other than the people that come to us. So we have a relationship with Congressman Jackson. We have a relationship with the Department of Agriculture representatives here in Texas. We don't have a relationship with the people that are actually making funding decisions. So it is wide-ranging. I sound like the biggest cheerleader, and I, they are not paying me. I have no vested interest in this, other than what benefits the city of Amarillo. And I know that there are so many more resources and so much more money to be had for us if we were making, oh, I was going to tell you what it's like. So we're in contact all the time. And we, and when we go to DC, it's not just we go, we sightsee and maybe meet with Congressman Jackson, and maybe, maybe meet with Senator Cruz and Cornyn, and then go home. We fly in, we land, we Uber to the Capitol, we hook up, and then we've got eight meetings between noon and four o'clock, 10 meetings, whatever it is. Doesn't sound like a lot. But when you start doing the math on that many hours, you're going 15 minutes in one office, you walk 30 minutes or you walk 10 minutes, you go 15 minutes in another office, and you're doing a, you might even split up into two different groups that go and do stuff. So it's a brutal trip. It's not a sightseeing or a junket trip at all. You're going from office to office to office to office to office, talking to people, saying, here's who we are, here's what our agenda is, here's how we want you to help us, and here's how we will be a good steward of your resources and of your personnel, your funds, whatever it is they give us. So it's a very, you have to be very aggressive and forward-leaning, and you have to have worked on that trip for three or four, six months beforehand to be able to get a slot with these agencies. Because they just don't, you can't just go in and knock on the door and say, hey, you got a few minutes where I can talk to Congressman so-and-so or whatever.
And then after you're gone, we follow up with what you need done. It doesn't just end with that meeting. And one thing I wanted to mention, you mentioned Pantex. And yes, I've interacted with Ronnie Jackson. He's doing a great job. He's been there about a year and a half now. But again, I get back to Thornberry. And I remember his incredible interest, obviously, in armed services and defense issues. He wound up being chairman of Armed Services. And we still, to this day, there are some people that who know, we know how to punch buttons. Because I was on appropriations committee, on the Defense Appropriations Committee for 12 years. And we learned that way how to punch buttons on, the appropriators are the ones who have more influence, I guess, than almost any other congressional entity, because they do the budgets for everybody. And when we did the Defense Department, for example, they, when you call over there, they pick up the phone. And today, the gentleman from California is more than likely going to be the chair of that subcommittee. His name is Ken Calvert. And Kay Granger is more likely going to be the chair of the full committee if the Congress flips this time. Kay Granger from Fort Worth. So a good friend of mine as well. So we still have friends like that that we can call on if needed to make phone calls.
I think the last thing I would want to jump in, throw in is, especially here in Texas, I think this whole topic is a little bit of a sensitive topic. And they've reached out to me a number of times over the last five years, saying, hey, would you like to work on, at a federal level? And I've always said, well, it's, I don't know if it's the right time. I don't know if, if this is going to be a fertile field just yet. But with the amount of money that's on the ground right now, available to be had, it's a great time to get in. We should have been doing this a long time ago for the reasons we've talked about. But this current climate, funding climate, makes it easy. And politically, and I don't want to be political, but politically, we can debate whether or not that money should be spent this way. But it is going to be spent this way, somewhere. Why not here? Since it's going to be spent somewhere. And I sound like I'm trying to be persuasive. I apologize. I'm really, I am passionate about this. This is something where we can, I guarantee, I am very confident, I want to use the right word.
Good to be intentional about your words.
But I am very confident that we are going to spend a reasonable amount of money. And we can spend ARPA revenue recovery money. So we're not even spending local taxpayers' money to do this project. And we're going to multiply, that's a seed, and it's going to grow a massive tree. Because we're going to have the relationships in DC that we need and the insight and experience that we need to be able to target our efforts. Because like you were saying, Mayor, we can, we can fill out applications all day long for funding sources that we don't have. But if we're doing it wrong, or if we're hitting the wrong source, we're wasting our time. And we're not effectively targeting our limited resources. Like you got X amount of bullets in your gun, and you need to go get a deer. Well, shoot a deer. You know? That's a bad analogy. It works in Texas, though. So, anyway.
Other questions? We've had a really long dialogue about this. But we really appreciate you coming here so that we could have this conversation face-to-face in person. And we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Howard.
Let's move on then.
Mayor, before we, before we move on, I would like some guidance from council. Would you like us to explore this and bring this to you for consideration? We have done legwork already, just to have an understanding of what a relationship with them would look like financially, and what it would look like as far as what we would be doing. We kind of talked about that. Do you want us to move forward with bringing this to you for consideration?
Yes.
Or would you like us to work?
Please do.
Concerns? Okay. There you go. I think you have a consensus for an action item. Okay, moving on to 1C, updates from council members serving on outside boards, beautification of public arts advisory board. Dr. Sauer?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so the beautification arts board met on April the 12th. And some of the things that we kind of talked about, the first one is staff update. And during that staff update, it was announced that Kat Massey was chosen to be the new beautification and public arts coordinator. Is that okay to say that?
Yes.
I guess it's too late.
You said it.
Drop said it. Isn't it always better to ask for forgiveness than permission, right? Isn't that the way it works? Which I am thoroughly excited about, her taking over that position. She's going to be great for that job. So let me just tell you a little bit about what her job entails. And so a lot of this, her job duties actually came out of the beautification and parks and rec master plan and, and why this position was needed. And I think once you hear what she will be doing, you'll understand exactly, it'll give you an idea of where actually beautification and arts could actually go in Amarillo. She's going to coordinate the development, maintenance and management of public space landscaping, urban greening, community cleanups, volunteer core management. She's going to expand the volunteer park beautification programs, oversee recruitment, management, training, and recognition of volunteer participants. She's going to help develop policy and criteria for art installation in the parks. She'll probably even work on, we've talked about it over the past five years several times, about an art ordinance that there is a portion that is of the project fund that is intended to go towards public art and beautification. She'll also be identifying, identifying communication protocols, roles and responsibilities, coordinating points between arts and parks and rec and other departments. She will, prior to installing new art, she's going to ensure that the processes and resources are in place to make for sure that we maintain them, that we're a good steward of them, of the display of the art pieces, develop a virtual registry of public arts and artists. And that's already been started through the convention bureau's board and also through, I think, haven't you all been working on that too, Beth, at Center City? And so that's already been started. But to get it basically under one roof would be pretty significant, I think. Establish partnerships, collaborative efforts in order to expand public art and beautification in the community. Identify, prepare, submit grants for public arts and beautification. We need somebody that's doing that. Keep us abreast on council of cultural activities and opportunities. Help assist in development and maintenance of sustainable funding strategies to support. And the list kind of goes on. So it's actually, it's a, it's a pretty big position. She, I think she's going to do a great job at it. I think it will completely help us transform a lot of the quality of life issues we have here in town. And I think it's, and I think after being on council for the past five years and understanding, this is also one of those things that is important when, for our economic development corporation, is people do come here and they look. And one of the things they look at is what's the quality of life going to be for the employees that they're bringing here? And so I think this is a major step that, believe it or not, it's not just parks and beautification, but it's actually has an impact on our ability to attract employers to Amarillo that just help us continue to grow. So I think that's going to be a really great thing. Also talked about the public art and beautification coordination meeting. So what that is, is that's a committee that, half of that committee comes from beautification and arts, and half of it comes from parks and rec. And so they had a whole list of things that they want to work on. And these are really true. We need to have a better call for art. We need to make it broader, not just necessarily local. We need to expand the displaying from the, from currently, it's at six months to potentially 12 months. Potentially broaden the materials that can be used. If you can attach it to the, to the display pad, then maybe it would be something we need to look at. Helping advertise it better. We also received an Exile Energy Environmental Grant 4K to help funding with a lot of the things that they're doing. So that's going to be important. Consider giving a stipend. And I think this may be one of the most important, because we ran into this a lot with beautification, was the artists that were considering the beautification part of it, they needed some upfront money to be able to make, make purchase of certain things. And so they're considering, how can we give a stipend in the grant that allows for material purchase? And then they're also shooting for the first art revealed to be June the 14th at Sam Houston Park. And then soon to follow with Northwest, I mean, with the pool and with Memorial. The other things on there were, they're going to, we're going to begin to work on a park education signage campaign. So we're, we have several challenges at our parks. Namely, the four big ones are probably pet waste, driving on the grass. And I know I've seen several posts on Facebook concerning that kind of thing. Graffiti showing up, trash are the main four. And, you know, whenever Parks and Rec did that Red X campaign, it was very successful. And so we need something similar to try and help address these four problems. The other last thing that ended up happening was we voted to reimburse on one of the finished mural projects at the Pergola Shop. It's completed. And so if you haven't seen it, it's at 10th and Johnson. And they did a great job with that one. And that's everything we had for the parks. I mean, for the arts and beautification.
I wish you guys would do something. Questions for Dr. Sauer or for Kat?
Yeah. Jared, I just want to thank you for the job that the staff has done. Kudos to Sherman Bass. This was a brand-new committee five years ago. And not only has the need continued to grow, but the committee has continued to identify work that the city can do in partnering with citizens to make our city a more beautiful city. Under Dr. Sauer's leadership, he served on that committee the entire time he's been on council. But I just want to recognize that Sherman has had a lot of influence, as well as in handing the reins over to Michael Koshuba and his team, in creating this position for a permanent staff member to have their eyes and their hands working on this every single day. And the city, I think, is a gigantic step.
Yeah, because I think that I could see this becoming a department unto itself, even though it speaks to parks and recreation predominantly. But I think whenever you see through all the things that she's going to be responsible for coordinating, I think the beautification and arts coordinator is going to be touching almost every department and will probably soon require a little more help than just herself.
Kat, thank you for being willing to take that on. Okay, let's move on to Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Dr. Sauer?
Okay. So Parks and Rec met on the 13th, which was the same day as our last city council meeting. So they had staff updates, two new employees, of course. One of them is Kat. Another one is the aquatic supervisor. And that opening has been open for quite some time. And thankfully, young man, Austin Fairley, has been hired for that position. And so that will be a great added individual to help taking care of things in parks. The things that occurred in there, we talked about the parks ordinance. And this, like several of our other ordinances, is very outdated. And it needs to be reflective. And so we're starting to go through that. And we'll probably be bringing pieces of that that back to council for consideration, because it needs to be reflective of our needs today. So like to take, for example, 20 years ago, nobody was talking about the problem with pet waste in the parks. And so now then, there's, we have to look at that and figure out, how do we manage what's kind of gotten out of control? And so we'll look at that.
Do you mean people are not picking up after their dogs?
Yeah. Well, and I think people do a really good job of that when they're out walking their dogs. It's just a different sense of whenever they're running loose in the park. You know, it's kind of like, like if we had animals at our house, we would go clean the poop up out of the yard before we mowed the yard, right? It's just, that's not naturally occurring at the parks at this point in time. And so I think part of it is, it's really not so much, do you need to create something punitive as much as we just need to create an understanding and change the way that we look at this and help people understand, you know, your park is, it's like your backyard. And so we just have to learn that we're, and there's many other things that are going on with that part of it. The next thing was looking at parks financial sustainability plan, and that's something I can guarantee has never been done before. And we have to continue to look at the cost recovery of all aspects of parks and recreations. And, you know, just to kind of give you an idea, whenever you put something top of mind and you see those things change, is we've had to figure out what level of recovery are we comfortable with, you know, on different things? And the example goes back to golf. You know what? In 2017 budget, we were subsidizing golf. This is the first time I'd heard this part of it, but Michael kind of gave me these after the meeting. We were subsidizing golf at $30 around in 2017, if you want to put it that way. So our cost recovery was about 45%. And so we were actually subsidizing each round of golf $30. But by just looking at golf the way that we did and coming up with, and it was a long haul of working through, and it wasn't the easiest, was it? It was kind of painful at times, and, but coming up with ways to do that, we've reduced the subsidy to $10 around. And I think that's kind of important for us to even see it that way, that we've reduced that subsidy by two-thirds. And the cost recovery, I think, is where, is approaching a 75% recovery, if I remember correctly, which is, I believe that's what our goal was way back in 2017, was it wasn't like we said, you've got to be 100% recovery. It was, we just can't sustain the golf courses at 45% recovery. And I think it's really good to turn around and look that five years later, that we're achieving the goal that we looked at. It may not look exactly like what we had originally intended, but it has come around. And so I think in the same way, we just have to look at all the different parts of parks, and how do we make the cost recovery so that we can keep our parks sustainable and so that we can keep them looking fresh and doing the things that we need to do? So then we also discussed the athletic lighting project update, and so as of right now, it's out for bid with a goal to start as soon as possible. And you know what? If you, the other thing that we kind of have to realize is just how slow the wheels of government sometimes turn, you know? So they issued an RFP April the 18th. It was first advertised the 18th. The second advertisement's the 25th of April. The deadline for RFP questions is the 16th of May. Deadline for responses to those questions is the 19th of May, and proposals have to be due by May the 26th. So it's not, it's a little bit different than if it was a private type of a situation where you just, you go do your bids, you get everything back in a week, you make your decision, boom, and you start the project. But the idea is, is, the good thing is, it is out for bid right now, and the goal is to start as soon as possible. Talked about the park maintenance update, the mowing contract that we voted on several weeks ago. It's been implemented as we speak, and so it's moving forward. The last thing that we talked about was the playground update, and I know you guys are aware that we passed, I believe it was out of either CARES or ARPA money, that we had some funding right for 10 of the playgrounds. And they will be starting in mid-May with Benton and Mary Hazel rig, and then you're probably going to see them starting, clipping them off about two every month until they're all completed for the 10 parks that are going to receive new playgrounds. So things are moving forward. I'm really proud of Michael and his group, and they're doing an excellent job of working really hard to get our parks into a shape that we can all be proud of and enjoy. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. Item C, C, is, or item 1C, C, is an update from the pedestrian and bicycle safety advisory committee. Councilmember Smith, I know it was confusing on this stream.
Thank you. The pedestrian bicycle safety committee met in the last week or two. First thing we did was elect the chair and vice chair. We re-elected Steve Rogers as chairman, Tim Ingles was re-elected as vice chair. And then we have a new member, Chris Podziminy, and he's in charge of an organization called Six Pack Outdoors. They've built trails in Amarillo and all over the Texas Panhandle, and he started giving a report. He didn't finish at our meeting, but he's going to be a great asset to the committee. That's, I think, all I've got.
Okay.
Just questions?
Questions for councilmember Smith? It's good, that's, it's great for Chris to serve on that committee.
Yes.
Yeah. Moving on then to the environmental task force, also, councilmember Smith.
They met in the last week or two, did the same thing, elected the chair and vice chair to task force. David Moody was re-elected as chair. Dan Ferguson, a new member, was elected as vice chair. And then the next thing we did, Courtney White, one of our attorneys, gave open meetings training briefly to the task force. We discussed cardboard recycling. We have a cardboard recycling business in town, and there's different locations where cardboard can be taken to, to be recycled. It's four or five places in the city. And then we heard a report from one of the members about Don't Bag It program. This is a program where citizens are encouraged to mulch their lawns rather than throwing the clippings in the dumpster dumpster. If we could get this to catch on, we're going to continue discussion on that next meeting. But if we could get that to take place, it will reduce the amount of trash that goes to the dump ground, which this time of year is especially a lot, because people are getting their, their yards mowed and up and growing. And then Tim Dillon discussed a recent meeting with Donnie Hooper, who spoke to the Institute for Electrical, Electronic Engineers. They discussed illegal dumping, which he has brought to this group in the past. And so it was a very interesting meeting that Donnie spoke to. He's well-known for talking about illegal dumping. Any questions?
No. Sounds like you're doing great work there.
Coming along.
Coming along, that's right. Okay. Item E on updates is the Amarillo Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Committee and Advisory Committee. You know, that committee obviously gets an update on every text dot construction project in town, and one that I think citizens are noticing quite a bit is the I-27 project, which I-27 is down to two lanes inside the city while they replace the barriers that separate north-south traffic from each other. That project is going well, it's progressing, but I did want citizens to know, it's going to last another two years. So just knowing that I-27 is going to be two lanes on both sides for another couple of years, it's not good news, but we need to be adjusting our expectations to shifting our traffic patterns and just being aware that the congestion we've had on I-27 for, because we've lost a lane, going to continue on. But aren't the new barriers looking nice? So...
But mayor, those center barriers look like they're almost finished. What's next?
Yeah, well, there, there's more to the project. So, anyway, I just wanted to have that timeframe out in front of citizens. And then, you know, I-27...
That wasn't a stumper question.
Yeah.
It's going to be exit adjustments, and they'll move the lanes of travel into the middle, and they'll use those outer lanes for adjustments. I didn't want...
Yeah, no, that's good.
So does that also include when they do start the, is that also the project, whenever they switch to the I-27 where they go to eight lanes? Because that's coming up soon, too, from what I've remembered.
That is on the tip, the, but I think that is more Hollywood. That's not necessarily in the city.
No, that's not in the city.
That's more from like Hollywood down to...
Canyon.
Yes.
But it's good, good for people to know that the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or soon to be the Transportation Management Authority, is bigger than just Amarillo. We are a key part of that area, but it is, it goes all the way down to Canyon, and, you know, it's, it's bigger than us all the way around us.
That's true. And then just on I-27, another update to you guys. I went to Laredo last week, spent two days there working on I-27 issues. We've had a major victory in the ports-to-plains world. The whole idea behind creating I-27 as a federal highway that would go all the way from Laredo to the border of Canada in order to facilitate the transportation of goods across I-27 and to alleviate the congestion of goods being transported on I-35. Had a major victory a couple of months ago as it was designated a future federal highway, a future federal interstate for the segments that aren't already connected. So one of the most important things for us to do is to get that highway coming out of Laredo. Laredo sees 8,000 to 10,000 trucks crossing their border every day. And it was pretty fascinating to tour that transport station and to see how they x-ray everything that's in those vehicles so that they can intercept illegal trade, drug trade, criminal trade. And I was really impressed with the work that they're doing down there. Mayor Sines and I have gotten to know each other over the years, but always on Zoom calls. So this was the first time I had a chance to meet Mayor Sines in person. But those meetings are, are going well, and of course, the I-27 Ports-to-Plains Committee met while we were down there in Laredo. The mayor of San Angelo, mayor of Del Rio, mayor of Laredo, mayor of Lubbock, and the mayor of Amarillo are very involved in that ports-to-plains effort to build the highway that will bring goods in and out of Mexico, in and out of Canada, and through the state of Texas and affect, and build the Texas economy. So that...
So 27 would go through San Angelo, then?
Yes, it actually splits. So it comes up out of Laredo, makes a loop, goes a little bit east to San Angelo, a little bit west through Midland, then it meets back together. Big Spring comes up, goes through Lubbock, Amarillo, Dumas, splits, goes one route through the Oklahoma Panhandle, one route through the top of New Mexico, and then meets back together near Denver and goes north from there. But obviously, the Texas partners are most interested in the Texas route. So that route has now been designated, and that, that was out of partnership through several different congressmen, and our congressman, Congressman Jackson was very helpful. Congressman Arrington out of Lubbock, very helpful. So that's good news. Anything I'm missing on I-27, Jared?
No, ma'am, I don't think you did.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think that was it on MPO. Okay, next on our agenda then is an update from the Canadian River Municipal Water Authority. We have Kent Satterwhite here. Give us an update. Kent, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Mr. Miller. Floyd told me to keep this under 45 minutes so I can get going.
Thank you, Floyd.
I bet I can do better than that. Want to talk briefly about water quality in the lake today. This, this graph here shows the water we deliver. The dark blue is our lake. The light blue is groundwater, and then the green is what all member cities supply themselves. You can see it was solid lake water until 2001, and then we started supplying groundwater, and then the lake started dropping. In 2012, we didn't supply anything out of the lake at all, and then, then it came back some, but it's still highly mineralized. The issue with supplying water from the lake right now is chlorides. We have to keep our blend of our groundwater and lake water below 300 parts per million, which is the state standard for drinking water. You can see the, the green line here is chloride concentration. You can see it spiked in a big way during, during the drought in 2012. The dashed line is, is tons of chlorides. So you can see, you know, they went down quite a bit as the lake volume went way down in '12, but they've come up drastically since then. And, and that's a big concern on us trying to meet city demand in the future. This is, again, the same graph of the chlorides, the concentration, and you can see, you know, we can project that it's going to keep going up unless we have some big-time inflows based on, based on history, and where that goes is worrisome for us. And here, here's the issue. Again, the, the blue line is, is our total supply. The green line, the green bars are the cities' supply themselves, and that blue line above is, is demand average over the last five years. And you can see the demand is higher than, than either us and the combination can supply. So that is a concern. We've started a, a study to look at our salinity control project to see if it's cost-effective or are there other things we could do that would, that would be more beneficial to the lake? I mean, whether it's before the water comes in or RO or something like that after. But anyway, we're in the early stages of a study. We hope to get some of these answers. But it, you know, based on this graph, we're, we're coming into some times where we could certainly have issues. Cities will have to make up the difference, obviously, or cut back. And that's kind of the, the gist of that side of the story. I have one other issue to talk about. I've been with Cremaux for 32 years, and see y'all later. Anyway, not exactly quite like that, but they're starting a process to, to, to look for somebody. We don't have a date. I've agreed to stay until whoever that person is is trained and ready to go. They may not need training. But anyway, that's, that's the latest on that. And that's it.
Well, we will be sad to see you go. We appreciate the years that you've spent serving, and so we hope it takes a really long time to find a replacement.
Well...
Questions? I'd like to go back and revisit just this daily max, and what you're talking about is quality of water. In other words, you can't meet the demands at the quality that you want to provide it.
That's exactly right. To meet state drinking water standards, the 300. Now, we could, we could break that standard, and, and many of the cities such as Amarillo have water they can blend, and they can blend their supply down. Many of them don't. And so we're in discussions right now with TCEQ, the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality, on, on, you know, what happens if we decide to break these, you know, add more lake water and go above 300 parts per million chlorides? And we haven't got a final answer on that yet, but minimum would probably be to take down your superior drinking water signs instead of approved, that sort of thing. But, you know...
So what's your timeline for knowing that from TCEQ?
Oh, I would, it shouldn't take long. I'd hope in the next week or so.
Okay, I, I think...
I keep bouncing from person to person. Well, this isn't my department, but this person can help you, and you know how that kind of goes.
Yeah.
But that's where we are with that. But, you know, the other option is, you know, on the table is Cremaux 2 at some point, and that would cure this problem, but we need to cure the lake problem, too, the salinity of the lake, because it's such a great resource. It's renewable. We consider the groundwater not, non-renewable, and so we need, we need to get this under control somehow.
Talk to us about Cremaux 2, especially, we've had one new council member, and we haven't done a lot of talking about it this year. So for all of our benefit, though, I kind of had in my mind that Cremaux 2 was more of a 2035, 2040, that, you know, we were a good 15 years out from needing to do that. Do you think that's changing?
Well, I've talked with some of our cities, and maybe their idea is maybe 10 years out. Initially, it was supposed to be online in '23 was the date, and then the cities kind of keep pushing that out. So it's just completely up to the cities, you know, when, when you need it. And, you know, for, for the information, Cremaux 2 basically will double our groundwater capacity. It'll be another 54-inch pipeline or larger and with double the, the wellfield capacity, and that will, that'll make us pretty bull... And that will make us pretty bulletproof, pretty drought-proof. But we still want to use that lake water as much as we can.
I think, to answer that question, as far as what we're using in our planning documents with regard to Crimwell 2, because we have to have... It's such a big project for the city of Amarillo, and really for all of our partners, is that we have to have it in our... Always in the back of our mind. And moving forward, as each year goes on, we're going to start design on that project in, I think, '27 or '28, Floyd. And then, we're going to start construction in the late '20s, if not '2030 or so, with a plan coming online not long after, you know, a couple of years afterward.
A little later than '25.
Yep. So, your 2035 is correct. You just have to... We just have to walk it backwards quite a bit to get to design and funding and construction, and then ultimately being up and running by your date, which was 2035.
So, Floyd, are those projects sitting on our CIP list?
Answer that. Yes, Mayor. You get the five-year window. But in the five, 10-year window, those projects will be coming forward in the appropriate year to make sure they stay timely. Our system has the most flexibility of anybody in the system to deal with this problem. So, we can take... We could take it above the 300 parts per million, and we have the capacity with the new wellfields and pipelines that we've put in to blend it back below that and maintain our standards. But we're working with the other cities to make sure that they can do that. There are cities that can't do it. So, we can maximize Crimwell through that window of 10 years and still have ample emergency supply through our system as projected. And we'll watch that growth and project that as we move forward. If they need to come forward, we'll work with the other member cities to do that.
And there's going to be a decision point for council, a council, at some point in the future, you know, whether we get one year before the project starts construction or five, six, or seven years before construction. There's a decision point each one of those years, once we get to about five or six years away from construction. Do we start raising rates incrementally over a five, six, seven-year period where there's no big hit, but there's a small increase every year to pay for the construction of Crimwell 2? Or do we ride it out until the very last year before we have to start construction and then bump the rate to pay for that construction right off the bat? There's a lot of schools for thought, you know. And I'm not going to say who thinks what. But there are people that say, hey, I want a very incremental, measured, manageable increase every year up to the point where we get enough revenue to be able to pay for the project. And then, there's others that say, I don't want to pay a dime more than I have to right now. And I want to leave it to whoever's on the utility billing payroll, and every other city's utility billing as well, at the last year to pay for, you know, to pay for what we have to pay for to do Crimwell 2. So, those are things that are going to be out there about five or six years down the road for us.
Questions, council?
Yeah, I've got one for Kent. So, I understand the chloride's going up because of the drought. And that's really the reason they kind of went up, right?
Well, that's what sped it up. We're one of the few lakes around that don't release water. We just, you know, most lakes pass water through.
Okay.
So, that's the only way to get the minerals out of the water, you know. So, what we're doing is we're pumping just a little bit and evaporating about four times that much. And so, the evaporation leaves the chlorides, and that's the issue.
So, before we went through the drought, we used to release water?
No, we've never... We've tested our gates.
We've never released water.
Right. And this trend's been steady climbing over time. But, you know, you get bumps up and down as you get big inflows. But the trend's up, there's no question.
Okay. So, that's where it really all comes from, is we don't ever let water out. Water just comes in. And so, the chlorides just keep stacking up as time goes on.
That's exactly right. And, you know, we used to pump a lot more water back before the lake, before the groundwater project, and when it was better water. And that helped. But, yeah, like I say, that's the only way you get the chlorides out is by pumping it nowadays.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
One thing I might add on Crimwell 2 is we're almost complete with the right-of-way purchase. So, that'll... When you guys do decide to do it, we can hit the ground running. That'll, you know, it's a pretty time-consuming process. So, that'll help, I hope.
Questions on this side? No? Okay. Thank you, Kent. Item 1E is to discuss the Harvard Leadership Training Program and the Innovation Team. Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor. We have, of course, there's a number of people participating in this process. You, me, and Rich Gion, most notably because we've already done the training in New York. However, we have a brief presentation from Rich Gion, Managing Director, and also from Jordan Schubach, who is our Innovation Team Chair. So, Rich, go ahead and take it away. And then, we can answer any questions from council.
There we go. So, what is it? Each year, the City Leadership Initiative selects 40 mayors. And the mayors, in turn, select two senior leaders from the city to participate. Those 40 mayors and 80 leaders engage in a year-long program focused on leadership and management that is developed and taught by the Harvard Kennedy School and the Harvard Business School. Obviously, the mayor selected Jared and I to participate. In September, we kicked off with a week-long intensive classroom session. And since then, we've done monthly remote learning sessions. The program actually combines those intensive classroom sessions with broader training and capacity building to help participants foster their growth, advance key capabilities within City Hall, and lead more effective, efficient, and equitable cities. The goals of the program are very clear. It is to build and support high-performing teams, increase leadership and management capacity in the city, communicate with constituents and key partners, use data to increase transparency, make better decisions, and manage performance, effectively innovate by prototyping, implementing quickly, and learning from failure, and to work across silos and break down barriers to collaboration, not only within City Hall, but across the city in general. I can't really understate the impact. For me personally, I'm not a new leader. I've been leading for 20 years. I have done so many leadership courses and sessions. But I think there are some very key differentiators between this program and my experience and other programs that I've done. First, the quality of instruction is like nothing I've ever seen. It's what you would expect from Harvard Business School and the Harvard Kennedy School. Second, they teach through case studies of real issues in real communities. And often, you have... Sometimes, you have access to the actual leadership that worked through those issues. So, it's impactful. It's been incredibly impactful to me as a guy that came from private sector to not just learn from real-life scenarios and how those were dealt with. But the third piece is the quality of the other participants. They've hand-selected these mayors from cities that are aggressively trying to improve leadership and aggressively working to improve the quality of life in their own communities. So, the exchange of ideas and best practices through these case studies has just been incredible. I know for me, and I think that the others would echo that. So, it's no surprise that 89% of cities report improved leadership capabilities after the program. And 86% report improved organizational capabilities. But there's more on the back end. We've walked out of this with a network of resources. My conversations with these other city leaders go well beyond the classroom walls now. It's not just the resources at Harvard that I've picked up the phone more than once and talked to instructors about specific issues that we're dealing with. And if they don't have those resources, they're plugged into a network that we are now plugged into. But I've also done that offline with several leaders. I'm in regular communication with leaders in Middleburg, Africa, South Africa, right now, on what they're doing in broadband. Where the exchange of ideas just continues. It also gave us access to Harvard Fellowship opportunities. So, thank graduate students from Harvard coming to Amarillo to help us research, study problems, develop solutions, a fresh set of eyes from a young mind that is clearly talented enough to be at the Harvard Kennedy School. And the last piece, out of this program, after the first week, a handful of cities were selected to participate with direct participation from Harvard Resources. They had three tracks around data, collaboration, and innovation. And we were selected for the innovation track. So, now, we have a program wrapped around innovation that we'll be doing in concert with Harvard Bloomberg Resources. And I'm going to hand that off to Jordan to tell you about that.
Thank you, Rich.
This one?
Yep.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Jordan Schubach. I'm the Director of Communications. I also have the honor to serve as the Innovation Team Lead. So, it's a very exciting opportunity for us to be involved in. The Innovation Track, at its core, is a 10-month training program designed to teach our team how to find and deploy creative innovative solutions to solve problems and address issues in the city. They teach a method of partnering and working directly with the citizens and really partnering with residents in developing solutions rather than jumping immediately to solutions. And it's designed as a template that we can plug in pretty much anywhere else in the city as well, from very small or smaller issues all the way up to very large multi-year programs that could use a fresher look. It's important to note that part of the goal is to find solutions for everyone. And so, we do work very hard to gather and consider perspectives from the entire community. We dig in very, very deeply to root causes of problems and don't just kind of gloss over what we all think might be the problem. Also important to note that the program doesn't provide us with any policy recommendations. So, we're not going to get to the end of our 10-month program and get a list of solutions from Bloomberg, Harvard. That's not how it works. Instead, they teach us how to be creative, innovative thinkers, how to problem-solve, how to really dig in and work with the community to develop solutions that work for Amarillo, developed in Amarillo, which is, I think, just really a very creative solution rather than just saying, here's your solution. So, I want to talk about who the team is made up of really quickly. Every person on our team was specifically selected because of skill set they brought. We tried very diligently to spread our team out between management levels and department levels so we could get a wide variety of perspectives on the team. I'm going to go ahead and name them because some of them are here, and also because they're the ones doing the heavy lifting. I'm just the one that has to stand up here. But Jenny Ramirez is the Assistant to the City Manager. Kat Massey is the Assistant to the Mayor. Kristen Wolbach is the Assistant Director of Parks. Amanda Barrera is the Director of Library Services. Carla Burr is the Public Information Officer from APD. Chris Quigley is the Assistant Director of Transit. Jason Rittlesberger is the Director of Community Development. Aaron Palacio is the Assistant Director of Human Resources. Mitch Norman is the Director of Human Resources. And Alan Harder is the Assistant Director of Public Works. And I also wanted to mention and really thank Missy Tucker, who helped us to really get this thing launched off the ground as one of the initial members as well. So, what are we working on? We're working on illegal dumping. That was the issue that we decided our team would focus on. We initially kind of had a very, very broad view of solving illegal dumping in the entire city. And that's still certainly the goal, is to have that kind of impact. But we discovered rather quickly that we needed to narrow our focus so that we could have a more immediate impact and then spread what we learned from the more narrow focus out to the rest of the city. So, we have kind of narrowed our efforts in the San Jacinto area after working with Donnie Hooper and those folks to determine what might be a really good area to focus on initially. Again, that's step one. San Jacinto is. It is the goal to spread what we learn out throughout the entire city. But that's just kind of where we're focusing initially. So, how does it work? There are three components to the program, essentially. One is we get a dedicated design coach from the Bloomberg Harvard team. Our coach is Rick Edinburgh. He's in Chicago, actually. We meet with him fairly frequently virtually. I'm just going to read a little bit of his bio here because I'm sure I'd get it wrong. But he's the President, the U.S. President for the Evolved Group, which is an AI-powered human rights technology platform. Prior to joining the Evolved Group, he was the managing partner with Nsidum, which is an international strategic innovation firm. They've got seven international offices. He's got an MS in Design from the Illinois Institute of Technology and a Bachelor of Fine Arts from the School of Art Institute in Chicago. He's an occasional professor. He's a noted author on innovation, on human design, innovative approaches. I think our team has been very impressed with not only his knowledge, but also his patient coaching of a team that's kind of brand-new and learning all this stuff. So, we like him. Another component, then, I'm going to jump to the bottom here, if you're looking at the slides, is that, you know, Rich mentioned the networking opportunities. And it really can't be discounted, the amount of things that we're able to learn from other cities that are going through this Innovation Track as well. There are 11 other cities currently going through at the same pace and the same speed that we are. Eight of them are in the United States. One is in Canada. Three are in Latin America. So, we have the same kind of experience where we get to talk to people from all over the globe about what worked, what didn't, how we might use it or not use it. So, it's very valuable. And then, we have access to, and we're learning, the curriculum that was developed through Bloomberg Harvard as well. And so, I'm going to go through that just real briefly here. As you can see, there are three kind of phases to the curriculum. The first phase is understanding the problem. The second phase would be generating and testing ideas. And then, the third phase is delivering outcomes. And I want to point out that you don't necessarily move one, two, three. You might stay in number one for a while and circle around that little red dot while you make sure you've really got it down before you move on to the next phase. So, there are multiple steps within each of these phases, from framing the problem to conducting a research. And it just flows all the way through until you finally get to the end and you're measuring the impact of whatever you've deployed as possible solutions. So, I can talk more about this. I think you all have it. But I'm happy to chat through what I know of these phases, anyway, because we are right there. So, we're on making sense of the data. Our team has spent a good amount of time framing the problem. And that is to say, understanding the root causes of some of the illegal dumping issues in Amarillo. And then, a significant amount of research, one-on-one and group interviews with individuals, residents, business owners, neighborhood organizations, really anybody that we could get to talk to us about these things. We've talked to employees who are residents of San Jacinto area. And if anybody wants to talk to us, again, you know, we're still in this understanding the problem phase. So, I don't want anybody to feel left out if they're listening at home or see the recording. Or if anybody knows of anybody, we're happy to kind of continue that process. Because, again, we do want to make sure that we are being as inclusive as we can with people that have information to share or possible solutions they'd like to provide. So, we're in the deciphering data phase, essentially, now, looking for themes, looking for insights so we can gather from all the interviews and data that we've gathered. So, what's next for us? We're going to, obviously, continue moving forward in the curriculum. We go to December until we kind of finish this particular program. It's a very iterative process. That is to say, it's a... We evaluate what we've done, and then we adjust so we can do it better. And then, we evaluate the adjustments, and we adjust the adjustments. And then, we continue to work forward through this process to make sure that we're always evaluating what we're doing and not assuming that we're doing it right. And then, as I've already said, we can ultimately apply this entire process to problems and issues moving forward in the city, which I think is just incredibly valuable, new way of thinking. So, I think that's kind of all I have. I'm sure that Rich would be happy to answer questions, or I'm happy to answer questions or provide more information as well about what I know about this, anyway.
Questions, council?
I think we're fortunate to be selected for this program. Sounds great.
Yeah. A few weeks ago, I was informed that just the innovation training alone is about $190,000 investment to provide that training. And that's at no cost to the city. So, you know, these are grant-funded programs, and we're very grateful to have the training.
That's actually the whole point of the Innovation Track, is not just to solve that problem, but to teach the methodology across multiple departments. So, that's why the team that was selected was across as broad as it was.
That's kind of a... We say all the time, or maybe I say it all the time, but, you know, this is about illegal dumping, but it's really about a lot more than illegal dumping. And I think that's what's so exciting about it, is that every one of us walk out... We walk out of a class or a group meeting and think about all the ways we can, you know, use this as part of a different program here, a different program there. So, it's really very exciting.
Do you think, after this program is finished, you will have learned things to solve other problems without their help?
Yes, sir. I think that's definitely the intent. Rick, our coach, has said that when you're done with this program, you won't have mastery. But what we will take away is all these connections with Rick and with everybody else, all these other people around the globe who have gone through the same training. We keep the material. You know, we will learn as much about this as we want to learn about this because we will have all the resources we need.
And I think a benefit of what we're doing through the Innovation
And I think a benefit of what we're doing through the Innovation Track work that Jordan's leading is that we will improve illegal dumping in the city. The purpose of the program is to learn and inculcate in our culture at the organization a very broad view approach to problem solving that includes our community, that includes key stakeholders, that includes people who aren't directly related to the problem, to bring in those fresh ideas and different perspectives on how to solve a problem. So the purpose is to learn a better way to solve problems that is flexible enough to apply to any problem, even one as chronic and endemic as illegal dumping. Can we solve illegal dumping? If we can, I guarantee you, we're going to get a big recognition from like Pulitzer, well, not Pulitzer, but... A big award.
Somebody.
You know, everyone's going to appreciate us solving illegal dumping. But the purpose of it is to learn a very flexible, innovative way to solve problems that can address chronic and endemic issues that plague every city across the country. It's not to teach policy. It's not to teach any one way of thought. It's even, it's really not even to teach a regimented way of thinking. It's to have a very progressive way of looking at, progressive is the wrong word, a very innovative way of looking at leadership, organization, and problem solving. And this is what we're talking about, is problem solving right now.
Yeah, to pile on that, Jared, it's a methodology that we can incorporate into the way we train new leaders at the city, so it just becomes part of leadership culture.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you guys very much. We really appreciate the time y'all are pouring into leading the innovation team, especially you, Jordan, Amanda, and Alan. Jason, we appreciate the time y'all are spending to get the training. Kat, Jenny, thank you. Okay, final thing on the discussion portion of our agenda is to request future agenda items or reports from the City Manager. Do we have anything, counsel? Okay, not hearing anything. We'll move on to the consent items, but first, let's take a bathroom break. That's okay. So we'll recess for five or so minutes and be back. So we'll recess for five or so minutes and be back. Counsel, it needs to come off for further questions or discussion. Hearing nothing, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 4-0 vote. Moving on to Section 3 of our agenda, 3A, we have a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 7975. Mr. City Manager?
We got Brady to present the item. Sorry, I'll say that over again for our fans on TV. We got Brady Kendrick, Planner 2, here to present the item. Brady, take it away.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. This is a public hearing, first reading to consider an ordinance annexing into the city of Amarillo, Potter, and Randall County, Texas, on petition of the property owners. Territory generally described as a 77.29 acre tract of land, being all of West Plains High School, Unit Number 1, a suburban subdivision to the city of Amarillo, and unplanted land all in Section 73, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas. The vicinity is Helium Road and Arden Road, and the applicants are Canyon Independent School District and Helium Hope Development LLC. The land proposed for annexation includes the newly constructed West Plains High School and adjacent undeveloped land to the east of the school site, adjacent to the new Loop 335. On April 15, 2022, as required by state law, notices of this public meeting were published in the newspaper, posted on the city's website, and public and/or private entities were notified via mail. Additionally, the agreed service plan, which describes services provided to or to be provided, has been signed by both the city manager and the property owners. This service plan becomes effective and binding should counsel decide to annex the property, which will occur at the second reading of the annexation ordinance on May 10. Per an existing interlocal agreement, the Canyon Independent School District site currently has water sewer and storm sewer service. The land of the Canyon Independent School District site was not part of the interlocal agreement, but if annexed, will be allowed to use the just mentioned services adjacent to their site. Additionally, should the land be annexed, the remaining city services such as solid waste, code enforcement, fire, among others, will be provided to all land in the boundary. Annexation is one of the primary means by which a city grows and also allows the municipality to provide services to areas, exercise regulatory authority necessary to protect public health, safety, and ensure orderly development occurs at the fringes of a city, and to ensure development barriers are not created that would prohibit future city growth. This item is now ready for the required public hearing and for counsel consideration.
Any questions for Brady, counsel? At this, thank you, Brady. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Anyone present who wishes to speak on, or for, or against this item may do so at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on Item 3A.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7975, annexing into the city of Amarillo, Potter, and Randall County, Texas, on petition of property owner. Territory generally described as 77.29 acre tract of land, being all of West Plains High School, Unit Number 1, a suburban subdivision to the city of Amarillo, and unplanted land all in Section 73, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas, in the vicinity of Helium Road and Arden Road.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item 3A. Any questions or further discussion on the motion? All of those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Item passes. Like, you don't actually vote. Item passes with a 4-0 vote. Mr. City Manager?[1302.42][1302.42][laughter] He's throwing me curveballs up here.
I raised my hand at the mayor right when she said anybody opposed. No, I just wanted to just add a little color to this item. This is a big item for CISD. Superintendent Fluschi, Dr. Fluschi, and Assistant Superintendent Heather Wilson have been invaluable partners on this project. I think we have a great working relationship. I really just wanted to compliment them on the work they've done to work with us, and also with our legislative agenda, our legislative delegation in Austin, to be able to make this a possibility. So just compliments to CISD and their team.
Yeah, that's great. They are great partners, and we admire the progress and the work they're doing to meet the needs of CISD. Anybody else want to vote without authority? That's what Jared was doing.[1348.68][1348.68][laughter] Okay, let's move on to 3B. Item 7976.
This is a public hearing and first reading to consider an ordinance rezoning a 1.4 acre tract of unplanted land in Section 73, or 63, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways, the change from agricultural district to general retail district. The vicinity is McKenna Square and East Village Square, and the applicant is Mike Ross for Domain Attown Square Limited. Adjacent zoning consists of agricultural district to the northeast and west, and planned development District 373D to the south. Adjacent land uses consists of undeveloped land in all directions. The applicant is requesting a change in zoning in order to develop the tract with a dental and orthodontics clinic. The Planning and Zoning Commission found that while the request does not strictly conform with the typical planning principles, development and zoning patterns within this portion of the section have resulted in retail and mixed-use land uses developing within this section away from the section line arterial intersections. This is primarily due to the presence of Sanci Road and the town square mixed-use development located immediately adjacent to the applicant's tract. The Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the applicant's request is a logical continuation of existing zoning and development patterns in the area, and would not result in any detrimental impacts to the area. Notices were sent as required by state law, and no comments have been received as of this meeting. Considering the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a unanimous vote.
Any questions for Brady, counsel? Thank you, Brady. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on Agenda Item 3B. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against the item may do so at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7976, rezoning a 1.4 acre tract of unplanted land in Section 63, Block 9, BS&amp;F Survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways, to change from agricultural district to general retail district in the vicinity of McKenna Square and East Village Square.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance, the motion for ordinance, I'm sorry, it's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 7976. Are there any further questions or discussions from the council about it? Okay, all of those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That item passes with a 4-0 vote. And that moves us to the end of our action agenda, and what we have left is executive session. Mr. City Attorney, do you mind reading our dismissal language?
Not at all. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, closed session, the Amarillo City Council was announced on April 26, 2022, at 3:15 PM under the following authorities. Section 551.072, discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, sell, or value of real property in public discussion, such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position. Section 551.087, discuss commercial or financial information received from existing business or business prospect, which the city is negotiating for a location or retention of a facility, or for incentives the city is willing to extend, or financial information received by the state.
Thank you. At this time, we are adjourned into executive session.